We'll do a roll call for attendance and then we'll open the public, well, we'll go over procedure, then we'll open the public hearing. Okay, so we'll count in five, four, three, two, one. Welcome to the Finance Committee meeting of October 13th. Tonight on our agenda is the public hearing. In order to get our meeting started, where we are all remote access, we have to do a roll call vote for attendance and on any other motions that take place tonight. Just want to make sure everybody is aware that what is in the chat is being recorded and saved as part of our permanent record. And please keep your comments on topic and we'll hopefully have a good evening. All right, so we'll start with attendance. Denny?
Here.
Susan?
Here.
Andrew?
Here.
Ally?
Here.
Kathleen?
Here.
Lisa?
Here.
Steve?
Here.
Doug?
Here.
Ryan?
Yeah.
Jeff?
Here.
Lucy?
Here.
Mark?
Here.
Josette?
Not yet.
And myself. We have 13 in attendance. Okay. So the public hearing, how we proceed with that is there has to be a formal motion to open the public hearing and second it. Then the members vote to open the public hearing. And what we will do is we will go article by article and see if there's any town citizens that wish to address anything in those articles. We'll hear their questions. We'll field any responses through myself to town administration or other members of the Finance Committee as they wish to address the issues. And with that, let's entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Open meeting?
Okay. I got Denny seconded by Susan.
Yeah.
Okay. Once again, we have to do a roll call. All in favor, open the public hearing. Denny?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Ally?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Lucy?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Myself and Josette is still absent. Okay. All righty. We're going to go article by article and as you get called upon to ask a question, please state your name for the record. And if you're a RTM or just a citizen, please state so. All righty. Let's see. Okay. All right, so first article up is Article Two, which is current year budgets. The motion by the Finance Committee and agreed upon by town administration is no action. Generally, this is to supplement the budget that we passed in the spring for any unforeseen items that have occurred. There has been a retirement. There has been additional costs coming through for the elections, but we believe we can cover that within the stabilization budget.
Josette.
Oh, okay. Hang on a second, people. I got Josette on the line. Can somebody resend the link to Josette? She can't seem to get in. Thank you. Okay, they'll be waiting.
Right now.
Yep. Okay. Okay, so back to Article Two. Like I said, there's been a couple of items, but we believe we can cover that through reserve fund transfers if needed later in the year. Anybody wish to speak to Article Two? I do not see any hands raised. Actually, okay, we have Sharon McCarthy. General question on contracts. That's coming up next. We will be right into you. No other questions on Article Two? Article Three? Actually, Articles Three through nine are all employee contracts. Sharon, let's take your general contract question and then we'll proceed into each one individually. Let's see. Okay. We have, can anyone explain why the cost of living increases are different depending on contract? Jim, did you want to tackle that or I can take a stab at it? Okay. Basically, each collective bargaining agreement negotiates based on what the union believes are their priorities. Some prioritize other benefits. I do see Josette now in for attendance purposes. So like police are looking for, they wanted to increase a stipend or create a new stipend so they may have sacrificed pay increases in earlier contract years in order to get a stipend that was added to the contract. Others will give up healthcare contributions in order to get larger pay scales. So each collective bargaining agreement is based on what they come to the table looking for, for their members, and each person has a different priority. Does that answer your question, Sharon? I do not, okay, she's fine.
Yes.
Mr. Maraski is up next. Mr. Maraski, do you have something in general on contracts or do you want to talk about specifically police contract?
Okay, can you hear me?
We can hear you now.
Yes.
Thank you. I have a general question and then I'm going to have some maybe specific questions about other contracts. But my general question, which basically involves not only this contract, but almost all the money contracts, is I know that the selectmen are going to be hearing with the assessors about a dual tax rate on November 10th. And I would like to know, what is the drop dead date for the assessors to get that information to the state so a tax rate can be determined?
Okay. Board of Selectmen or Patrick or Jim?
Board of Selectmen's having a hearing in November, as Joe stated. The drop dead date's the end of the month.
The end of November?
Yeah, Joe, and if you'd like to talk further offline about it, I'm more than willing to do so.
Well, what I'd like to know is, I know that the state senate and house ways and means chairpersons have met last week and have held hearings regarding revenues. And they've had a lot of experts in and they have had the Department of Revenue come in and the Department of Revenue has given them some figures. And the figures are very daunting. Now, if the state cuts our state aid, what I'd like to know for this contract, do in others and the money articles, do we have the money to pay for the contracts without a Prop Two and a Half override, general override?
So I guess, Mark, if you don't mind me jumping in here, Joe, have you received your town meeting packet?
Yes.
I believe I outlined all of this in the town meeting packet.
Well, it shows money going, I've got that information, but still, you know, I don't know what kind of cuts the state is going to make and whether or not the so-called wealthier towns may take a bigger hit than towns that are more in need. So, you know, your estimates can go by the wayside possibly. And I would like some reassurance that we, that the townspeople are not going to have an override if we go forward without information about state aid.
Actually, Jim, I'll take this one. As part of our deliberations on setting aside money for stabilization and OPEB, we actually cut back what we were going to tie up in the way of free cash. And basically, we've put aside for this fiscal year, in case the state does basically say revenues are short and we have to cut back on communities. After town meeting, if everything passes as it stands, we will have 914,000 of free cash. And hopefully, that would be able to subsidize us. But in order to do so, correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, we would still have to call a special town meeting to appropriate the free cash to rebalance the budget, correct?
You would have to have a town meeting, but as I outlined in my memo to the town meeting members, there are multiple line items that we've identified as reserves, not just stabilization, not just free cash, but there are other items that I've, that were outlined in that memo, all town meeting members. And that's why I asked Joe if he sees it. I am very confident in the numbers that we have agreed on for all six of these unions and the non-unions people too. I wouldn't have brought it forward, as I stated, to the select board and to you people. So do I see a two and a half override coming right now? I don't see it coming. You know, there's going to be another issue coming along with the school building assistance, but not in our immediate future.
And not in the next two years either, because there is no contract settled with the schools, the school department contracts don't start to expire for, until 2021 and 2022. So if there's an effect on state aid going forward, that could affect other contracts as well. And for all practical purposes, they've seen what you've negotiated with these unions.
Other general questions on contracts or do we want to start going contract by contract? I don't see anybody popping up in the queue. Article Three, police contract. Specific questions on police? Okay. Specific questions on Article Four for the fire department? Specific questions on Article Five, DPW?
Hi, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. On the fire department contract, it's Shannon McCarthy again.
Okay.
I was just curious, how, how many of our, the members of the fire department, how many of them are EMTs? And if they are the ones who drive the ambulances, I'm just, you know, curious about the dynamics behind that.
Well, all new hires, since I believe three years ago, have to become paramedics. And I believe right now, we have 44 firefighters and all but four are paramedics. And I'll let the chief go into more details if you, if you'd like about the staffing of the ambulances and so forth.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have 40 members on the fire department, 29 are paramedics. We have three that are currently in school to become paramedics. Since 2003, you have to become a paramedic in order to become a member of the fire department. However, we do have language in there that allows us to hire if they are EMTs in paramedic school, and that's what the three that we currently have in school are. They're half to three quarters of the way through their program. Once they're finished, we'll have 32 paramedics and eight EMTs.
Thank you, Chief. You all set, Sharon? Joe Maraski?
That I must say, I'm active with the mute button.
Thank you. Joe?
Five-minute meeting, that's it.
Joe, you wanted to speak on fire?
Yep, I'm there.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay. Under Article 15, hours of work and overtime, the entire paragraph called day shift, entitled day shift, is being eliminated. And a new paragraph entitled fire prevention day shift appears to be, being put in its place. This is a very minute question, but probably can be very well explained, but I'm having, I'm having a hard time understanding the third sentence, because we're talking about a shift or a work week. And then the third sentence begins with, this position will have the rank of lieutenant. So I'm wondering whether or not we're missing a sentence or whether or not this position should be a different subject.
Chief, you want to address that, please?
The position will be at the rank of lieutenant. This language was changed in its entirety because the original language called for a day shift, but it did not specify what it was for. We've specified what it's for with fire prevention. It'll be a day shift position. And that position was scheduled to go online and then was pulled back with the COVID.
That's, I mean, I'm not, what I don't understand is why it's called this position. The subject of the paragraph is about a work week and day shift should, is this position the right subject for that sentence?
Well, as you can see, Joe, it is specific to fire prevention. So it says fire prevention and then it parentheses day shift. So that, that fire prevention position, which is what this day shift is for, is specific.
Is that, is that fire position?
And it would have the rank of lieutenant.
Okay, but that's the title of the position, this fire prevention?
That's correct.
Okay.
Chief, that was the position we had originally voted to create a new, a new position last year, but we weren't able to fill it because of COVID, correct?
Right, so we got a little blogged down with the language that was in the contract the last time. The last time, the contract language said that the person would work until 6:30, which prohibited me from having flexibility using that position to fill a shift up need be. So we got into the negotiation phase of it and we negotiated it. I was waiting until July 1 to actually fill the position, even though we had the funding for it. Waiting till July 1, just so that it was clean and we weren't working off the old language. COVID hit, it threw a wrench into everything and that's where we stand at this point. That position is not filled.
Okay. But you can designate a current person on your staff to take over those responsibilities as a day shift person, based on the contract?
Currently, the deputy fire chief is in charge of all fire prevention right now. Residential fire inspections are done for the smoke detectors by the shift captain. But we do not have a fire prevention. The deputy is the, technically, the only fire prevention person right now. This person was to come in and work underneath the auspices of the deputy.
Okay. All set, Joe?
Yes.
Okay. Other questions on fire? DPW, Article Five? Do not see. Article Six, town clerical contract.
Mark?
Yes, Denny?
Should we, you know, if people have questions for certain articles, they want to put them in the, in the chat box now, so we're...
Sure, yeah. Yeah, if you, if you're looking to...
I think encouraging people to do that.
Yeah, if you're looking to do anything on the remaining three contracts, six, seven, eight, please chime in now quickly as to which article you wish to speak to. And as I finish up on public safety, which is Article Seven, if you look to talk to Articles 10 through 13, which will be capital budget, you can start chiming in then. All righty, so if you have questions on, sorry, six through nine, please chime in now. And when we get done with the library contract, which is eight, start chiming in for the capital budget articles. That would help.
People get ahead of it, I think it'll make it easier.
Okay. So no town clerk, or sorry, no town clerical issues? All right. Public safety dispatch? Don't see anyone. Library contract? There being none. Let's see. Planning board salary and hourly schedule. These are non-union positions.
It's the personnel board.
Personnel board, sorry, personnel board, yep. Okay. Let's see. Mr. Maraski? Personnel board? Can somebody unmute Mr. Maraski so we can ask his question?
Okay. My question, you went a little too fast for an old timer like myself.
Okay.
My question on, is quick on library.
Okay.
How many employees in the library currently take the town's health insurance?
Is that a Marilyn or Jody question, Jim?
Last time I checked, it was about two or three of them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is that it, Joe?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
All righty. So we're on to the capital budget. Articles 10, 11, 12, and 13. If anybody wishes to speak to any of those, please start queuing up. Article 10 is physical infrastructure. And then there. Equipment is Article 11. None there. Articles 12 and 13 are roadway improvements. Article 11 is the use of free cash and other sources, which would be a simple majority vote. Article 12 is a borrowing, sorry, Article 13 is a borrowing that would require a two-thirds vote because we will be borrowing the funds. Any questions on roadway improvements 12 and 13? Okay, there's none. Stabilization and OPEB, Articles 14 and 15. As I alluded to earlier, we reduced the contributions to both of these in order to set aside additional free cash. In case the state does cut back, we would have an additional stream of, of funds to help balance the budget. But as Jim says, there are items in the existing budget that we can forego to keep the budget balanced. The big debate on OPEB was we had set out a plan two years ago where we would take certain percentages from free cash and automatically bring them forward as articles to fund OPEB. And we are kind of deviating from that at this fall town meeting with the hopes that we will still have the free cash in the spring to play catch-up. Any questions on stabilization and OPEB? Do not see any. Articles 16, if you want to start chiming in for 17 and 18, please do. 16 is our annual transfer of free cash of receipts received for school reimbursements that have to close out the free cash. And at the fall town meeting, we transfer those receipts back to the school department because they basically are relying on those as part of their budget process. Any questions on 16? 17 is Board of Assessors. The state has a mandatory program that the town, on a, on a regular basis, be it three, four, or five years, has to go out and do assessments on personal property, real estate, business property, and utilities. And this just happens to be one of the cycles where we have to catch up on the utilities and do a evaluation of their value. So basically, in lieu of taxes, the utility companies get a different assessment because basically their real estate is small, but their equipment can be sizable. And this is part of that program to get out there and basically certify the value of the utility companies in town and other businesses. Any questions? 18 is Walpole Cable Television. As part of your monthly cable bill from Verizon or Comcast, there is what's called a PEG line item. Those funds get remitted to the town. The town sets them aside in a separate account for basically the, the town cable, corporate, actually Walpole Cable, which is a corporation, puts forward a budget of what they want to do in the way of public programming, educational programming, government programming, like streaming our meetings and so forth, this public hearing. They put forward their budget, they had leftover funds from last year's budget. So basically, this year's budget request is only 160,000 out of those PEG funds. There is no questions on that. All righty. 19 and 20, inclusionary zoning. I'm going to let Andrew take the lead on any questions that come in on Articles 19 and 20.
Sounds good.
Okay. Anybody questioning the affordable housing, inclusionary zoning, bylaw, and the related trust?
I have a question.
Yep.
Everybody that's an RTM received a letter from John Walsh, who's a town builder, and regarding Article 19. And I'm not sure how many on our board are RTM members, but I would like it to be added into our minutes so that those who are not will be able to see what one of the local business, how one of the local businesses feels about this. And in his opinion, he's against it and he's requesting the RTMs to vote no.
Okay.
But not knowing how many are RTMs, and I know not everyone is, I think it's important information to be read, so we're getting both sides.
Sure. Do you want to read that in for us?
It's two and a half pages.
Two and a half pages, okay.
And I think if, whoever's taking notes, Pat, Patrick, I don't know if you have a copy or not, but I can get you a copy of it, I can send it to you.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I think we should probably vote that into the minutes.
Just one thing, I'll add to that. I also wrote, I also wrote like a three-page letter in response to Mr. Walsh and I would also appreciate that.
Can we do a copy of that also?
Sure.
Yeah, I have a copy of that I can send to Patrick.
Okay.
Okay, super. Send us both sides.
Yep. Okay, so...
Thank you.
Entertain a motion to accept the citizen's letter and Andrew's response to be added to the minutes.
So moved.
When we, sorry, when we review the minutes, hopefully we would have all had a chance to read both and we can make clarifications. Moved by Susan?
Second.
Seconded by Kathleen? Okay. Letters, that was strictly on 19 or did it cover 20 also, Andrew?
Yeah, it covers both, I think. It's mostly focused on 19. It's actually mostly focused on 19.
Okay, all right. So you have a motion seconded to add two correspondence into our minutes. Denny? In favor? Denny?
Yes, sorry.
Okay. Josette?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yeah.
Ally?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Lucy?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And myself, 14-0-0 to add the letters. Okay, thank you. I did see we have, okay, we have, we have John H. with a question?
Yeah, I have a copy of that I can send to Patrick.
Okay.
Okay, super. Send us both sides.
Yep, okay, so entertain a motion to accept the citizen's letter and Andrew's response to be added to the minutes.
So moved.
When we, sorry, when we review the minutes, hopefully we would have all had a chance to read both, then we can make clarifications. Moved by Susan.
Seconded.
Seconded by Kathleen. Okay. Letters. That was strictly on 19, or did it cover 20 also, Andrew?
Yeah, it covers both, I think. It mostly focused on 19. It's actually mostly focused on 19.
Okay, all right. So you have a motion seconded to add two correspondence into our minutes. Denny? In favor? Denny?
Yes, sorry.
Okay, Josette?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yeah.
Ally?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Doug?
Yeah.
Brian?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Lucy?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And myself. 14-0-0 to add the letters. Okay, thank you. I did see we have. Okay, we have John H. with a question. And then Susan, did you have a question also?
We also have.
No, my question was answered, thank you.
Okay, I was just going through the queue, okay, so John H.
Hear me?
Yep, I can hear you now.
Oh, okay, yeah, John Hassaniger here.
Okay.
Greetings. Just quickly, on 19 and 20, I'd like to know probably from Ashley, what monies have been expended? There's a consultant contract for work on this with Starling. Can you tell me what the, I'm interested in the funds that have been expended to promote the inclusionary zoning bylaw?
Okay, Ashley?
Actually, I'll take that, Mark. Yes, there were funds expended. John, I honestly couldn't give you the exact amount. I'd have to have the accountant dig that up because Starling's also been working with the zoning board with some of the Summer Street 40B project. So if you give us a day or two, I'll ask the accounting to dig that up and we'll get it to you. But it has been expended.
All right, I guess I would like then to, if I could, have Ashley circle back to me. There was also a survey and there's been other inclusional pieces produced, et cetera. I would like a budgetary estimate of the funds over the last two years that have been expended on this proposal.
All right, Jim, you can coordinate that for us?
My pleasure.
Thank you. Anything else, John?
No, I'll save my other comments for the planning board.
Okay. All righty.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. Julie Lowry?
Yes, thank you. Andrew and Ashley, you guys had a great meeting the other night and a great presentation on this this inclusionary zoning. But after it ended, I had asked Ashley, I think, a question about whether or not this particular zoning would apply solely to residential. And I just needed some more clarification on that. And I'm just wondering, is it, would it also apply to areas in town that are designated as like a mixed use? I mean, if there are any, I'm not overly familiar with all the zoning in town. And if you need more clarification on my question, I can do that by way of example.
Okay, Ashley?
Yeah, so the inclusionary zoning bylaw is triggered anytime there is the development of six or more residential units. So that includes multi-mixed use.
Okay, so just by way of example, if someplace in downtown is more of a, it's designated as a business right now and so, and it goes up on the market, are you saying that if someone tried to put apartments there and it wasn't already designated as any type of residential use, they, nobody could build there? Or could they go and get a special permit and try to build? I don't know if I'm confusing the issue. I'm just wondering about areas in the downtown. I'm trying to figure out what areas this is really going to apply to, to put it bluntly.
Sure, so anywhere that there's multifamily zoning allowed is where multifamily zoning can go. Multifamily zoning can't go in the single-family residential neighborhoods, which is different from under the 40B law. So our bylaw requires a certain amount of commercial space for residential and certain zoning districts. So that would still apply.
Thank you for that clarification, I appreciate it.
Now, Ashley would, so if somebody was going into a mixed use and we turned around and says, okay, your bottom floor has to be some kind of commercial slash retail, but the three stories above it, they would still be subject to affordable housing units? Or not, based on this bylaw?
Depending on the number of units. So if you propose a five-unit building, this wouldn't be triggered. Or if you propose a five-unit subdivision, this isn't going to get triggered.
Okay, but if we had three floors with six units a floor, then basically we'd be looking for one unit per floor basically to be affordable in this mixed-use development? In theory.
I think that's how the math works out, yeah.
Okay, all righty. Let's see. Let's see. Okay, okay, so I have Robert Damish.
Hi, I'm here, Robert Damish, precinct 7, RTM. So Josette mentioned the letter from John Walsh. I actually gave him a call, I'd never talked to him before, but I was intrigued by his letter. So I gave him a call and I won't go through all the details, but he did tell me a great example of how a town working with a developer, and it was a story about the town of Mansfield. He was working with Mansfield to put some units in over there, ended up having some affordable units added there. And my takeaway from that was, it seems like sometimes we don't always work directly upfront with the developers or reach out to them. And I'm hoping that will be changing as things go along. He did tell me that historically, he hasn't always, the town hasn't always been warm to development. And just another comment on John, again, I did not know him before the call. He's not part, he's like an independent developer, he's not part of like a Toll Brothers or a Pulte. So I found it refreshing to hear his take because he's a Walpole resident. So I, I'm not choosing a side with his letter, I'm just seeing his letter does have some good merit. That was my comment on him. I had one other comment. And after the meeting that you guys did such a great job on the other day, Andrew and Ashley, thank you for that. I did do a lot of research and I talked to, I made a few calls. And I did find like the town of Barnstable put in a, what's called an affordable assisted apartment program in which you can actually take existing apartments and reclassify them as affordable. So make them, since taking existing property instead of having to build and make them 40B. So just an alternative. I don't want to go into too much details, but do want to know that there are some good alternatives out there. And I kind of was brainstorming after the meeting the other night. So that's all, just a couple of comments, thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Okay, John Hassaniger, you have something else? John?
Okay, thank you. One of the concerns had been with the Economic Development Commission was that most of the projects, in the ones that people seem to object to the most, have all been incidences of housing being developed in business zones. And the, really, in a way, folks say if they didn't have these large complexes in the business zone, such as Pulte, Toll Brothers, Cochrane, et cetera, that Russo, that they would not have the concerns that they do. And unfortunately, don't understand that projects they're worried about aren't really 40Bs at all. And one of the thoughts was, why didn't the planning people looking into this think about eliminating residential development in the business zone instead of trying to over-regulate it in the residential zone? One of my personal concerns living in East Walpole is Ashley commented at the meeting the other day that all these projects under the inclusionary zoning, if they are multifamily in any fashion, they'll have to be in the underlying zone, which means all new, those projects will all go to East Walpole because that's the general resident zone. So one section of town will be burdened with all the future multifamily development, which I don't think the people east Walpole have any idea you're doing this to them. So that's going to be a headache. There's another, many other objections. One of them, you know, for example, is the minutia they went to with six units, which is relatively a small innocuous number. Most cities in areas that do this, they talk about 12, 13, 14, 10. By dipping down to six, you actually engage almost all the parcels in town, which actually broadens the exposure of what people tend to not want, is to have affordable everywhere. And at the same time, this article, if you, once you get to safe harbor, it promotes more affordable down the road than would be minimally required. And I think that there's a philosophical bent in the promotion of this, which I do object to, which is that people promoting this are appealing to folks who, many of them moved from West Roxbury, some of the neighboring towns in Rosendale, et cetera, because of the influx of the higher density and the influx of many different things that have happened multifamily-wise. And they don't tend to want the bigger types of development or more density of development. So by dipping down, I think what you're doing is you're engaging the potential of future work across the town. And the folks on the commission that really, when it started, I went to the first meeting and it was very clear to me, two things. There was no one on this committee that had any experience or background in real estate or development or housing. And that there are three or four people there who were, you know, interested in a much higher density. They kept talking about diversity and 30% affordable housing, and which, to me, that changes the whole character of Walpole. So I wasn't in harmony with those type of thinking at all. I chose not to go to any more of those meetings. But I think this is, obviously, I'm not a fan of articles 19, 20, I'll put it that way. I have other concerns about it. And there is, there is a letter that was sent to town hall from the Economic Development Commission opposing this. And the Chamber of Commerce opposes it as well. And Mr. Walsh and other people in the real estate business, building businesses would tell you the same thing. So I don't see a bright forecast for this particular configuration of article or proposed resolution to the so-called 40B. One of the things I would say to you people, since you're the experts, there's a stigma. And I ask people, and almost everyone I ask, no one's ever been in a 40B. They can't even locate one, they have no idea what it's like. But it's terrible, it's worse than cancer, worse than communism or racism or anything. But they don't know what it is. And that's unfortunate. I mean, because these projects can be done very nicely. We'd have one in Russell Road that is absolutely beautiful. Anybody would want to live in there, it's so well laid out and designed and so aesthetically pleasing. So I think that, you know, there's an education component to the public and there's a cooperation component with the public that are missing here in this endeavor. And I don't think you miss much by kicking this down the road to another town meeting as I guess we're on the verge of what's called Safe Harbor. But I think there is, I kind of agree with some of the things that Mr. Walsh put in his letter. There's two Mr. Walshes, actually. The, there is a lot of sentiment there that it really hasn't been explored. And there's a lot of concerns that are open-ended. And quite frankly, down in East Walpole, two weeks ago, I just spent an hour asking actually strangers coming out of the restaurant or out of the convenience store about this, and people have no idea on the street. And that something like this that impacts every town, every person in town, every family, every household should be on a referendum for the town. Everyone should vote on it, not a committee of 10 or 12.
I got your point, John, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
May I respond, Mark?
Yes, Andrew.
So there was two points Bob Damish brought up and four points, or five points rather, that John Hassaniger brought up that I would like to respond to very quickly. Bob Damish mentioned John Walsh cited an example working with Mansfield and how that they had inclusionary zoning, or he was able to come to some agreement with them. I just want to say that this inclusionary zoning bylaw that we're proposing has been modeled largely off of Mansfield. Mansfield has had an inclusionary zoning bylaw for 25-plus years. And I would reckon that Mr. Walsh would not, having built some affordable units, had Mansfield not had that ability to bring inclusionary zoning to the bargaining table. That's the first point. The second point that Mr. Damish brought up, which was great, he used Barnstable as an example about how that they could supplement and improve affordable units in some existing structures. I just want to cite the next article, article 20, the Walpole Affordable Housing Trust. That is a perfect use case, so I'm really glad Bob Damish brought it up. The Barnstable example can be done. If we pass article 20, which I know we're going to get to later, we can use just such an example as Barnstable. Mr. Hassaniger brought up a few points. First of all, I just want to clarify this notion of 40B as very distinct and very different from inclusionary zoning. He mentioned how a lot of multifamily development is happening in industrial and commercial zones. Well, I just want to highlight that, a lot of that is because of 40B, right? Because we're below 10%, we have the ability for 40B developments to come in and take up our industrial and commercial zoned land, which we need for our non-residential tax base. So that actually argues in favor of inclusionary zoning to get above the 10% so that we don't, so we can protect that commercial and industrial land. And just to reiterate, the ICB does not allow multifamily development in any areas that it's currently excluded from, right? It's just where the current zoning bylaws allow multifamily. Second point, Mr. Hassaniger brought up was this sixth threshold of being too low. I just want to highlight Courtney Starling, the housing consultant, has done a lot of rigorous research across Massachusetts looking at this threshold number of where does it make it financially feasible for cities or towns to start the inclusionary zoning bylaw? And six, six net new housing units is a perfectly reasonable starting point for the trigger for the ICB. It's actually where Mansfield actually starts their inclusionary zoning. Third point, Mr. Hassaniger brought up how, at our meetings of the Housing Partnership, we were talking about 30% affordable housing. I just want to flat-out say that, I've never heard that. I've never heard anyone talk about 30% affordable housing. Just to give you a sense of the unit, to get to 12% on the SHI, to get a 12% affordable housing, we would need another 170 units. So no one is talking about getting affordable housing above 12 or 15%, much less 30, so I just want to address that. The last two comments that Mr. Hassaniger made were about delaying this and how the public is not aware and that we could kick the can to the next town meeting. This is the third town meeting that this article, the inclusionary zoning, was supposed to be voted on. We have had for over a year now, multiple opportunities for public input. We had a public survey with over 50 responses. We had a listening session at the library, a listening session at the senior center, at the South Street Center, excuse me. We have had, just last week, a virtual forum for RTMs. I would argue that this article has been vetted more than any article I've seen in the last four years that I've been on the Finance Committee. So I think the engagement with the public, we have bent over backwards, we, the Housing Partnership, to try to make people aware. We sit flyers out, so I just want to address that issue. And then the last thing, I'll hand it off back to the chairman. John Hassaniger mentioned East Walpole as being inundated with multifamily housing. We need to recognize that the zoning bylaws will be undergoing a rewrite in the next few years. And currently, as I understand it, multifamily housing is allowed in the GR, the general residence zone, which John Hassaniger mentioned would go into East Walpole. But it's also allowed in Residence B and the CBD, under mixed-use provision. So I think we need to address that question under future zoning. I think it's a great point that Mr. Hassaniger raises. We need to address this under a zoning rewrite that's going to happen in the next year or two, I hope.
Thank you, Andrew. One other thing on article 19 is that this gets the parties to the table to discuss a threshold. There are options within the bylaws presented that they can do land swaps, they can pay a fee in lieu of building the affordable unit. And that's where we get into article 20, where any fees collected would then be under the management of article 20. And they could turn around and they can convert existing apartment units to affordable units with upgrades and so forth to make them comply with the bylaws. I don't see anybody else in the queue for 19. So we'll move on to 20, which is the trust, which would basically manage any funds that are generated from the affordable housing, so the inclusionary zoning bylaw. This is a board that would be selected, or sorry, this is a group of trustees that would be selected by the Board of Selectment. They're given a broad range of specialties that these people should have with regards to skills that would be necessary to run the trust effectively, including finance, real estate, development, and so forth. Also, people who deal specifically in affordable housing. Any questions on the trust on article 20? I don't see anybody coming up in- I don't see anybody coming up in the queue. All righty. Article 21, stretch building code. Basically, this is something that's been around for several years now. Many businesses and developers are now complying with it anyway because they want energy-efficient buildings to keep their utility costs down. Now, every dollar that seeps out the window is a waste of dollar to a lot of these businesses. I actually work for a construction company and we actually require all of our subs to comply with the stretch building code, even though the communities that we're building in do not require. So any questions on stretch building code? Do not see any? Okay. Article 22, DEP grant. The Department of Environmental Protection has established a grant program that Walpole wants to capitalize on, where they will basically match dollar for dollar what we put forward in our appropriation to undergo environmental projects that the, I believe it's the sewer water commissioners are looking to do some water projects that would qualify for these grants. And basically, by us appropriating money, we're going to get reimbursement from the state and federal government. Is that correct?
Mark, this is Bill Abbott, Chairman of the Sewer and Water Commission.
Yes, Jim.
Oh, this is Bill Abbott.
Sorry, Bill. My emails, or text messages here, sorry.
One of the regular maintenance activities of the Water Department is to flush the water mains. And we will use this grant to improve the way we flush the water mains. And so the grant will pay 60% of the cost. In-kind services will pick up another 20%. And in the end, after we get reimbursement, only 20% of the $70,000 that's getting appropriated will actually come out of water-retained earnings.
Okay. All righty, I've got Joanne M. with a question.
Hi. I don't think you guys, can you hear me?
Yes.
I don't think you can see my hand raised because ZBA meeting, I'm just guessing this mic can explain. I sent my link because someone else couldn't get in and it's Julie Lowry and I think she and I keep getting messed up. That's what happened that night. But I just have a simple question back on Article 20. When the housing trust gets formed, and I understand, you know, the appointments from the Board of Selectment, will the Housing Partnership still be in existence? And I'm just asking because I'm getting a lot of people asking me that question.
Yes, it will stay in existence.
Okay, that's fine.
It would get dissolved.
Oh, it did dissolve.
Okay.
It would get dissolved if the, you don't, you don't usually want both.
Okay, so once we had the housing trust, if that passes, Housing Partnership will be dissolved.
Okay.
Thank you. Guess that's why there was confusion. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you. All righty. Okay, nobody else in the queue? Any other questions on DEP? All righty, let's see. Zoning bylaw change for outdoor dining and entertainment. Any questions on the outdoor dining policy? What question is this? I'm trying to remember. This is for all outdoor dining. It's not restricted to just the downtown business district, correct?
Correct. So this would be all districts, well, residential, but yeah.
Okay. I know most of our conversation dealt around downtown, but I was just trying to clarify. Okay. I don't see anybody coming in on Article 23. Article 24 is street acceptances. This generally has very little debate. Okay, South Street solar overlay. The petitioners have requested to pull back their article. They have some clarifications to make in their proposal to the planning board and so forth. And they've basically asked us to vote return to petitioner, which we have. So they can clean up their proposal and bring it forth at a future date, possibly this spring, to move forward with a solar overlay down on South Street. Any questions? None? Okay. Zoning bylaw for stadium parking. This is basically allowing residents to have parking on their property within a half-mile radius of a designated point in South Walpole. I believe there's maps, a copy of the map in the town meeting packages that showed the area that's affected. Basically, it's somewhat legalizing and regulating what's been happening for years and years. And enforcement of having people stop has not necessarily worked on a regular basis. But now that it would be regulated where people have to apply for a parking permit that would allow them to have a designated number of spaces on their property and not interfere with traffic flow over butters and right-of-ways. No questions? Okay. Articles 27, 28, and 29. I sent an email to Mr. Pila clarifying that our votes do not block him from bringing back his requests at a future time. It only applies to zoning articles that would be blocked if they had unfavorable action taken upon them. So I asked, I sent him a request. If he wanted to present tonight, he is entitled to. I did not see him pop up in the attendance list. If Mr. Pila's out there. Okay, I don't see him. Okay. Basically, we voted no action on 27 and 28 with regards to capital budget and capital projects. The emphasis here was that the articles seem to tend towards procedure. And in their form, basically would not be binding, even a referendum, if I believe I'm correct in what I interpreted from town council was that the only binding items on a town ballot that are financial-oriented would be debt exclusion overrides and operating overrides. Everything else is advisory that's put on the ballot that happens to be in the form of a question to the citizens. And if I'm incorrect on that, I'm sure we can get it clarified at a town meeting. Any questions on 27 or 28? Okay. 29, this we refer back to the petitioner in a discussion with town council today, where he's mixed pension and health insurance in a in a comment article. It's town council's advice that it's a non-actionable item. It just could not, even if we voted favorable action, it's something that could not go forward from town meeting as viable. So we've referred that back to the petitioner so he can either separate it or clarify his intentions for either or both in the future. Any questions on 29? Okay. If anybody chimed in late, last call on any article. If you want to quickly raise a hand with an article number, we will.
Hey, Mark?
Can you hear? Yes?
I think Joanne Mulligan was looking to.
Oh, Joanne, you're trying to get back in again?
I, obviously, definitely a problem with raising my hand. First of all, I want to thank on the parking issue in South Walpole, Dennis Crowley, again, for being very clear about what's going on down here. I know, Dennis, you get it. We're not hearing a lot from, we've reached out, I've emailed every RTM, hearing nothing. Little bit of complaints and thank you to John Carmichael and to Patrick Shield and to Jim Johnson for answering questions that I had. And I put on Facebook, but I know everybody is not on Facebook. I personally think, and I'm going to vote for the parking, I think that people do want it and it's going to happen no matter what. I agree totally with Dennis, with what Dennis had said when you guys voted. But it's really disheartening that people just don't get involved. And then, or people get involved, you hear the no's who say, this is going to benefit one or two families and you're going to ruin the traffic for my neighborhood. And I'm like, there's a lot of people that park and they're going to park no matter what probably happens to this with this article. But I just wanted to get that out there because so many people from other precincts are asking the town meeting reps of precinct four and five about, in saying that we should really be the ones voting on this. And I'd feel the same way if it was in another precinct totally also. This isn't like, you know, a big expenditure, not like the North Street House buying it. So I just wanted to thank you all for how you voted on that article and I do support it. I don't think, and I agree with Chief Carmichael, I don't think it changes the traffic situation one bit. I think if anything, it might alleviate it some. But I really appreciate you guys addressing this and the petitioners for getting all the signatures. And I know you had many more signatures for spring town meeting, but obviously we weren't able to talk about this petition. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I don't see anybody else chiming in for any other articles. So at this point, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
By Josette.
I'll second it.
Second by Denny?
Yes.
So we have a motion and second to close the town meeting, oh, sorry, public hearing. Denny? Yeah, we can't close the town meeting.
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Ally?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Lucy?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Myself. Our public hearing is closed 14:00. Thank you all the members of the public for listening in and contributing. Want to remind all the RTMs that there'll be, actually, there'll be a supplemental package dropped off to your house most likely tomorrow with a motion for consent agenda by the town moderator and also our COVID protocols for town meeting and an update as to weather-related changes in the schedule. As of right now, we're still planning on Saturday at 10:00. They will make the call as early as possible Friday morning and get the word out to everybody if we are moving the meeting from Saturday to Sunday, which would also be at 10:00 a.m. Okay. For the RT, for the FINCOM members, I just have a couple of items I wanted to go over before we adjourn. In my discussion with the town moderator and town council and administration, there was a couple of articles that we will probably be asked to address strictly because of the votes on the let's see, dispatchers contract, we had an 8-6 vote. Is there any member in the dissenting opinion that wishes to make comments or email me comments? So if the question comes up, I can speak what your concerns were.
What article was this work?
This was dispatchers.
Article seven.
Yeah, we came with an 8-6 vote.
It was Andrew, Lisa, Denny, Mark, Jeff, and me.
Yeah. I think part of the issue was the additional stipend.
It was the stipend.
I wasn't sure if there was other items on people's minds that were, you know, stepping against that one.
For me, it was the stipend. I can't speak for anyone else.
Okay.
Right, for Mark?
Yep.
Yes, for me, it was the stipend as well. If you'd like, I'm happy to consolidate anybody else's comments. So if people want to send me an email with your comments on that article, stay by Thursday morning at the latest. I'll consolidate them all and then forward it on to you, Mark.
Thank you. Didn't think there was going to be an issue on the police, even though we were 11-3. But I believe that was also, once again, the stipend issue, if I'm correct. The other one was Article 15, which was OPEB, and I think I addressed that tonight.
You did a good job doing that, Mark.
Yeah, the concerns of the board is that we're deviating from a plan that we put in place a couple of years ago. And that, you know, a near break even on do we set aside money now or wait till the spring? And it was that close of a 6, 8-6 vote to stay with the plan versus to deviate from the plan. So I'm prepared to speak to that at town meeting. If anybody else wishes to chime in, they're welcome to contact me. Okay. Any other questions?
That should be it.
Okay. I don't think we've actually, Jim, did they reserve a spot, a time for us if we had to meet on Saturday?
No, we have not reserved a place, a location.
Okay. Should we put something out there as a placeholder, just in case, and get a public notice out?
Can I be honest with you, Mark? I'd like to avoid it if we don't have to. It only creates more confusion with town clerk and everything. You guys have done everything to this point.
Okay.
Voted on everything. She has early voting that day anyways, so.
Yeah, we'll just let town meeting handle it then. So we won't meet in advance of the meeting. Okay. Oh, yeah, so RTMs, watch for your packages. Should be something out tomorrow afternoon. Might be tucked behind a different door than you're used to.
It was.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you, everybody, for your service. So a lot of good debate. I will entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting.
So moved.
By Denny. Seconded by?
Second, Lawson.
That was Susan? Okay. All righty. Okay. We are returning. Yeah, Denny?
Yes.
Josette?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Ally?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Lucy?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And myself. 14:00, we stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks.
Bye.
Take care.
Good night.